Good morning, everyone. And I'd like to welcome you to the Jackson County Board of Supervisors Tuesday, May 19, 2020, meeting. First of all, I'd just like to just take a moment of silence and pass our thoughts and prayers and respects on to sympathy on to the Engel family and also to the Long family, Russ Long's family, the passing of his mother, so. Thank you, everyone. With us today, we have Luann, our executive assistants in the background. Lisa, our county auditor, she's in the next room waving. I see Nick, Nick Hockenberry's on the line, Kelly, KMAQ, and Karen is on the line that I see. Is there other participants? Okay, anyway.
Kelly's got the same smile she had last week.
Yeah, she's pretty, she's pretty common with that. She's pretty good with that.
And she holds it so well.
So Larry McDevitt, Jack Willie, and myself, Mike Steinis, are your county supervisors. First on our agenda today is Clark Scholz, our county engineer. Good morning, Clark.
Good morning, Clark.
Is that iPad on, Clark? It's, you're really, yeah, okay, because they can hear you better. You're really faint otherwise through my microphone.
The first item driveway permits, all three being recommended for approval. We got Josh Epple, presidential entrance on 375th Avenue. The address will be 22111, 375th Avenue. Second one, Denziger, Woodman Hills Incorporated, section 19, residential entrance on the Gatsby Road, who still need to determine the address for that. Robert Hickson is third one, Otter Creek, section 26, appeals entrance on 183rd Avenue. And all three recommended for approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the entrance permits as presented. Just a note in there, it's the way things are and the way it is right now, we're all kind of in seclusion, but it's really encouraging. I think there's nine new homes going up within about the two mile radius of the town of Bellevia. So it's encouraging to see, to see that happen. Yeah, there's three in town and there's three north of town and west of town. So all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
The next one are utility and underground permits. We have four on the agenda, but that fourth one for CenturyLink, we still haven't received the check yet, so we be taking that one. First one for Lion Energy, Bellevue Township, section 27 on 375th Avenue. Install approximately 100 feet of cable to a new residence on 375th Avenue. Second one, McCoke to the Valley Electric, Jackson Township, sections 13, 24, 23, 26. This would be pole, pole directional bores with the, you know, existing poles that are out there. Third one, McCoke to the Valley, and here in Township, sections 26 and 27, directional bore 165 feet on 33rd Street. All these are being recommended for approval and of course, the work that he has described, you know, the attached, well, the area, both of those are drawn. So moved.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve the underground utility permits as presented. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay. Motion carried.
And the next item is calcium chloride bid. This is for our winter time for, for discussing the end of May. We're mixing with our sand. The bid for, for 3,584, 60 pound bags, calcium chloride. OCN Incorporated, Davenport, 1073 bag for 38,456 dollars and 32 cents. Nine chemicals, 1120 a bag for 40,140 dollars and 80 cents. Inns and Stevens decided not to submit a bid. Juror services on Indianoa, 1295 a bag for 26,412 dollars and 8 cents. And through the years, you know, it has switched back and forth between companies. And we would recommend OCN of Davenport at 1073 per bag.
Do we, do we always buy it by the bag or can we buy it by the ton in bulk?
That's the way they ship it, by the bag. But they ship, you know, numerous, numerous bags. It's just not, you know, we order 10 or 15 at times.
No, you get a pallet. So we have to open all the bags and physically mix all this with the sand? Is that correct?
Yeah, there have been at times where we used bags and frozen pipes, you know, 24 inch, 18 inch pipes.
Drop a bag.
And drop a bag in, you know, slit it open, drop a bag in.
I can see some of that, but there's no containers, large containers that we could get cheaper in bulk?
Then, you know, that takes up additional room in our, in our shops and in our main shop in McCoke. And we need all the space we can get for pipes, sand.
I guess what I'm talking is, Clark, like you say, you get a pallet full of bags would be this size. I'm talking the same thing as like seed corn. It progressed to these big black totes, you know, it's the same size.
And chloride sucks in moisture. If you've got that in, how should we say, uncontained in like a shed type thing, you gotta keep the moisture out of the chloride until you're wanting to use it.
So plastic.
And plastic bags are sealed.
Well, these, these plastics, I'm just wondering if it comes in crates. That's all. We inquired about it. That's all I'm asking. But did we inquire into something like that or no?
We, we really haven't because, again, you know, we unfreeze a lot of pipes like that, winter time, spring time.
So do you mix it with liquid then or the spray?
No, it's mixed, but you know, when we mix the sand, they ship out to the, you know, the other sheds.
So where's the liquid, where's the liquid stuff come from?
The liquid stuff, DOT has their own, I don't know, mixing bin where they take the chloride and mix it in, into a liquid pour. Yeah, the state does that. Some of the bigger counties do do that, you know, do the liquid chloride and spray in advance. You don't want to spray it too far in advance and it's.
Well, I see it on 64.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
You see it on the highways. Oh, there's something coming.
You can see it on asphalt roads where they look, by the time they're done, they look like oil concrete.
That's nice.
Well, I would move we approve the low bidder of OCN Incorporated, Davenport, 38,456 dollars and 32 cents.
And second then.
I have a motion and a second to approve, approve the calcium chloride bid from the low bidder of OCN and Company of Davenport as presented. All those in favor say aye. Opposed, nay. Motion carried.
Just some updates. There, you know, granted, this is my hard project, but they're milling on Highway 52. So we expect pile of cars. I was, should we say ran into one of those situations where we were waiting for the pile of cars. Please keep in mind, we're, we're trying to, you know, whether it's our project or state project, we are trying to improve the roads out there and there are going to be delays. You know, do we, do we like them? No, but it gets, it's part of the thing of our own construction of that.
Take a book along.
Yeah, in theory, up to 20 minutes, you can be expected to wait for a pile of cars. A lot of times you don't have to wait that long, but you can be up to 20 minutes on that. And it looks like we're probably not going to get, you know, R2 projects. I thought maybe you can take time before the end of May, but no, that's not going to happen. We had some problems with the burning of the asphalt, which means no burner, no asphalt on that. So they got that up and running. So there's, might be maybe towards maybe the end of the first week of June or somewhere in there, weather permitting too on that. So still, you know, farther ahead than we've been in the past. So any questions or?
No, I've had, I've heard good things about the road. So people that are traveling it.
Yeah.
Hope it holds up for us.
So do we. And, you know, it's compared to last spring, it's night and day difference. I mean, what's the key, what's one of the key things to focus on in springtime is weather?
Oh, I have a question on the rock budget.
I'd have to take, because we're getting, you know, rock tickets as we speak. So, yeah. I know we're probably getting down towards the tail end of our, you know, fiscal year 20 budget on that. So basically, when we get to like mid-June, you know, by the time we get tickets for rock, that's needed in June, that comes, that's going to come out on the 21st, by the time we get the tickets tallied up and reported claims. So really our fiscal.
Use it all up, but.
Yeah. Our fiscal year for rock really beginning is mid-June. It's by the time you get the other tickets, it's in the first part of the next fiscal.
It's good to see that rock out there.
Yeah. Believe it or not, we had a call that we got too much rock.
I've been on a couple that I thought, man, they're a lot of rock.
We do get those occasional calls. It was one where they decided because the coronavirus and traffic was down, not to do dust control. And so, you know, we, you know, when the road needed to be rocked and, you know, it covered their dust control from last year and, you know, that's a choice that they made. It was with the tree sap or the lignin and, you know, of the two chloride is a much better, longer lasting treatment. So, you know, they made a choice to not do, you know, dust control. And it's kind of like, well, we weren't expecting traffic to be shut down for the year. Traffic is going to come back.
I appreciate it, Clark. Thank you. Lisa, you want to?
I can yield my time this morning. It looks like we have members of the revolving loan committee wanted to discuss the emergency loan. So I will yield my time this morning.
Thank you. Welcome, Roger, Matt, Nick. What else am I missing here?
Is man on?
Yep. He's on the next page.
Okay.
You can swipe back and forth. Okay, so on our agenda, we have, is it under somebody's business?
It's under Luann.
All right. It's discussion and possible action on emergency business loans, including potentially amending the current revolving loan fund agreement. I know we had a letter or an email from Sarah regarding this.
Yeah, with some wording.
Yeah, it included the agreement that we passed last week, of course. Is there any further questions or comments on this revolving loan? Roger, Nick, or Matt, you have anything?
This is Nick. Appreciate Sarah putting this together so quickly for us based on the conversation that we had had at our last, last meeting here. And so just as a rundown for anyone who's listening, this was a request to Sarah to take a look at the existing revolving loan fund agreement to add a provision that would make these emergency business loans available, kind of under the same guidelines as we, the revolving loan committee and Roger and Matt put together for this emergency, this COVID-19 emergency period, as well as those that might happen in the future. So that this would be kind of an ongoing policy. God forbid, we have to go through this, this again. But I, I think that was a good recommendation by, by Sarah for us to consider if the supervisors are in support of the idea of utilizing a portion of the revolving loan fund for this purpose. Matt or Roger, do you have anything to add to my summary there?
You're muted, Roger.
Okay. Come on, Alan.
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. The, in Article 1, Sarah, Sarah says in the amendment, support love government, local government programs that provide a public benefit. And that really covers our tracks and what we've done before. And so that's a good, that's a good point, having to do with authorizing. The the other thing that I might say, and I just put it out for discussion. And that is on eligibility on section B. And it talks about the business must have applied or be in process of applying for state or federal assistance. And I'm not sure we need that. I, I, I'm not sure that, that's just open for discussion. You know, the PPP payroll protection, you get the money right away. So I'm just saying, I wonder if we need that. Is this just a straight up application without that in, in the eligibility? What do you think, Nick?
Yeah, I think, and to this point, we've had a conversation, I know Matt was on it, with the group in Dubuque, Dubuque Initiatives and the city of Dubuque and Greater Dubuque Development Corporation, as they have a similar program that we kind of modeled ours on. They've actually removed that part of the requirement that was a part of their original emergency loan program for that, that reason that Roger kind of laid out, that the state and federal programs, while any business is encouraged to go after them, they decided not to make it a requirement as, as part of that local incentive program. I think from, from our perspective, you know, if I'm working with an applicant who's in trouble and needs some, some assistance, whether it's through this program or any other, I would definitely be encouraging them to take a look at state and federal programs. But this would allow the flexibility if, in the instance that a business didn't have the eligibility for one of those programs. Or if we're looking even beyond this emergency and having this provision in the RLF agreement, in the future, there might not be the same state and federal response. So this provision might not actually relate to the reality of the situation there. But yeah, to, you know, I can see both, both arguments, I suppose. I'd be interested to hear what the supervisors have to say.
My first comment would be, all that would basically do is delay the potential for getting some kind of funding. If you have to go through the state or federal and then whether you're with, if you're denied, then you have to wait and reapply from the local. Seems to me that it would just tie things up.
I guess my thought is, I, I really appreciate the time and effort everybody's putting into this. I really give a lot of thought to it, for one thing. I still question the fact, are farmers eligible for this? I mean, they certainly are one to four to two to three person operations, large business actually, that are hardest hit. They really are. Do we, do we need support, you know, in the urban area of McCoke to, of, do we need the support of McCoke to? I guess I, I, I still have the question, are, are farmers eligible for this? Would this be eligible? And, and this committee is going to look at every, every applicant's finances to some effect? How do we split up the funds if we get 50 applicants? Does everybody get a thousand? How do you pick and choose somebody that's, you know? I don't know.
Mike, I can answer, to, to a certain extent, I can answer. Under the PPP or the payroll protection or application, if farmers have employees, they can apply for the payroll protection plan. So farmers, to a certain extent, can participate in the payroll protection plans. And in regard to this program, I think it's more geared to small business. I, that'd be my thought.
Are they not small business though? I mean, per se?
They are, they are.
They've been hit pretty hard. That's my point.
But it, it also indicates in there that a business must have one to 25 employees. That's under the eligibility part of it. So if we leave the eligibility the same, the farmer would have to have employees.
Most do.
Well, even the owner is considered an employee, which written.
Correct. Yeah. And I, to this, Nick, to Mike's point, I don't see anything in the eligibility as we wrote it to disqualify a farm business, on farm or off farm business. So I think they could apply. I'd question whether or not a $5,000 loan, just because of the, the nature of farm business, whether that would have a ton of impact, but they certainly are still eligible.
I guess that's my whole point about the impact. How, how can we really impact, you know, a few and not others? I guess my question is going to be a tough screening process. And I, I look more to people to come to general relief and get help almost. I don't know. Just my thoughts.
One other item that I just mentioned, and, and I don't mean to digress, but it leaves open the amount, the number of committee members, at least in my copy of the amendment. So that's something we'd have to deal with.
Yes, I think she left that blank because when we talked, it would be up to the board to decide the number of people that would review the applications.
Right. And it's my understanding that the applications first go to ECIA and Matt to organize them and then present them to this board.
So Nick, has the city been approached as far as participating in some kind of program like that too for the, I mean, basically within the city limits or no?
You mean, has the city of McCoke to been asked to use or create a similar RLF program? No. So they don't, they don't have an RLF program that, or an RLF fund, a revolving loan fund that would allow them to create something like this? They don't have that, the same, same sort of setup that the Jackson County Revolving Loan Fund has. So this would, this would hopefully be a program that would be able to serve the rural areas, some of our smaller townships and, you know, Preston, Bellevue, McCoke to cities.
But the city could establish a fund if they chose to.
Yeah, sure.
Sure.
Because there's a lot of communities that are doing that.
Any further discussion?
I guess the thing we discussed last week is, are we in fact going to do it from the revolving one fund? Or are we going to do it from another funding source?
I just feel the $50,000 is such a knock in the bucket for, for the plan we have here. You know, how many businesses are in the county, but there's a lot of, a lot of them.
Oh, I've said that from the beginning. My concern was that the few number of people will actually be able to support or help.
Yeah. And this is, this is Nick Hockenberry. If I can kind of jump in on that, that point. Said something we've been weighing as well, as we were putting kind of our, our recommendations to the supervisors together. And I, you know, $50,000 is, is, is certainly a great start. If it, you know, we're going to have kind of a period where we take applications, if we exhaust those funds, the supervisors certainly have the ability to say, take that into account, take a look at the applications and say more from the revolving loan fund or whatever the source fund could be used. That would, that, that would be kind of within your power as we've, as we've set up the program here.
Yeah, I realize that. That we do have the authority to do that, but we also have to look at the economy and the sales tax revenue that we're going to be getting and the steel tax revenue that we're going to be getting. And it's going to be much less than we probably have budgeted. So we have to look at how we're going to meet our needs for the county as well.
Is there any other further discussion?
I have a question. If I can ask a question. You know, me, I'm always about the logistics. So the question that I have is, you have $50,000. Wendy said last week that there were at least eight people that she knew of right away that would be applying or could apply, potentially could be applying for this, this assistance. Are you going to make this so this, this process is available from this timeframe to this timeframe? Or is it when the $50,000 is done and this program then has been, has dispersed all of these funds? And so in this timeframe, let's say it's two weeks. And, and Mike, this goes back to your question. If you have 50 people apply, how do you decide? Because in looking at the eligibility, when do you say no? And if you have 50 people apply, my question is, is do you divide the 50 people by the 50,000? Or what's, what's the criteria of who gets what amount of money?
Well, we, I, when I talked to Sarah last week after our meeting, we talked about this amendment and other, other things as well. But I said, there would have to be some type of a, a timeframe that they would have to be applying for the funding. Then we have to have the committee have an opportunity to review those applications. And then it has to come to the board for the final approval. And so you're absolutely right. If we get 50 businesses to apply and we've got $50,000, somebody is going to have to prioritize the requests and look at what those priorities are. As far as I'm concerned, I mean, that's what would have to happen.
Certainly, yeah. And the way that the program that, again, that we've kind of been watching as, as the, the first, first one to set it up in this area, similar to what we're doing here. It, it was first come, first served. So to that point, that, that's, that's something we could follow here. Or if you would rather, or if the supervisors would rather there be some, some scoring measures, that, that could be something that we consider as well.
I, I guess my comment is, I don't like first come, first served. You know, I think we have to look at what the needs are of the individuals and the potential that a loan would, would do for them. And I think we would have to prioritize the individuals or the companies or businesses that apply. I, I just, I don't like the first come, first served.
I, I'm uncomfortable with it also.
I guess, to be honest, I'm really uncomfortable with moving forward with it, to be honest. That's, that's, it's too many unknowns here and how you pick and choose and how do you decide who can and who's eligible and?
I see Sarah came on. Maybe she had a comment. Sarah? Do you have a comment?
Sarah, the, the board is wondering if you have a comment concerning, they're talking about the revol, the $50,000 revolving loan fund. Do you have a comment?
Well, I just joined. I'm sorry. So I don't know what all you've already discussed.
Well, Nick said in some of the other areas, it's a first come, first served to get the fine funding. And I made the comment that I, I did not believe that it should be first come, first served. I thought it should be on need and we'd have to prioritize the applications and see how many we could help. I, I just don't like the first come, first served.
I would say that that's up to the board to decide. If you want to do it on need, then you probably need to set some kind of parameters on how to determine priority of who would have a greater need, I guess.
And then another thing we discussed. And then another thing we discussed earlier, uh, that was brought up by Roger and Nick agreed is the item F under eligibility, that business must have applied or be in the process of applying for state or federal assistance. They, um, believe that that might not need to be there or should not be there.
That's fine. I wasn't sure because I know that Matt had mentioned that the application was going to be submit whatever application you've already submitted for the state or federal funding, which is why I left that in there.
Okay.
We also talked early on about the eligibility, who is eligible according to small business. And I brought up the point that many of our farmers are small businesses and they employ one to two to three people. Um, and some of the hardest hit. And it was under Nick's assumption that the farmers, the farming industry would be eligible. And I think Roger kind of leaned the other way to the point that it's probably for smaller businesses. I, I don't know how do you define that, I guess.
Well, I would say that based on the way we've laid out the criteria, um, farmers certainly could be because they do have, they do have a physical establishment. They, uh, the building, it's a building or I mean, the work is done here. Um, again, that's a decision that the board would need to make, whether you want to include or exclude them and, and you can do it. I think that is something separate from this amendment, that you could make specific criteria for this, um, the, the funding this time.
I guess what I'd say in regard to that is that, uh, obviously if you have a committee that is making a decision on the application and the, uh, the eligibility, I guess they can look at, uh, any application that comes in, uh, and make a decision.
I personally would not want that job to decide who's. If you need to look at somebody's financials, that's, that's private, you know, uh, confidential information, some of that, but, uh, it goes along with the application, I would imagine.
I think everybody needs to also understand that this is not just a weak process. By the time you form a committee, the applications are taken. The committee looks at the applications, makes a recommendation, comes back to the supervisors for approval. You're not talking about a three day process. So just so everybody understands, if this is passed today, this is not a three day process.
No, obviously it's not.
Is Wendy on? I don't see Wendy. Nick, I guess maybe this is a question for you since we've been talking about this for three weeks and, and it's out into public somewhat. Um, if they're, if they're listening, have you had anyone specifically about this program say, hey, are you going to start something or what? Were, were you at with it or it's just in general?
Yeah, well, I've had, um, and I'm, I'm sorry Wendy wasn't able to be on here, um, today, but I, I know that she's had follow-up since this discussion's been, been had. And she reached out to some of the businesses that I think would see this as more most useful, um, which are some of those smaller businesses, many on Main Street and otherwise. Um, so she, she's heard a lot. Um, I've tried to touch base with, uh, with Carrie Weaver and, and Bellevue at the, the chamber there. Um, but I, I'm aware of a number of Bellevue businesses who would be interested in it as well. Um, I haven't touched base with them all again, since kind of the formulation of this has, has changed a little bit, but I anticipate that interest is still there.
I, I guess to me, it almost sounds like we're isolating to maybe a couple areas, Bellevue, Makoka. Are we, are we including Sebula? Are we including Baldwin, St. Anatus, I guess. I, I don't know.
Yeah, no, they're certainly all, um, eligible. We just have established chambers of commerce in Bellevue and Makoka who have, um, relationships with those businesses and can quickly get kind of feedback and input. Um, so we, we don't have those in, in, uh, in Sebula. Um, but certainly, um, those with contacts in that community, I think if this is approved, um, our office as well as the area chambers will be sharing this with the business community and getting it in front of as, as many people as possible so that they know what's available to them. And I should say like, you know, Kalmuses, um, some of those businesses in, in other areas of the county, um, are often members in, um, in one of the two chambers in Jackson County too. So, um, Wendy and Carrie may already be speaking to those people.
Matt, maybe you could explain what's happened in, in Dubuque. And this was a, again, a county program and, uh, eligibility there. Are you there, Matt?
Yeah. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Um, so Dubuque County started last week. We received 14 applications on that, on, on their fund so far. Again, the criteria pretty much follows what's, what's been laid out in front of you on the eligibility. Um, besides, we did remove the whole, um, applying for a federal or state assistance. So that has been removed, but otherwise the criteria is pretty much the same. Um, again, they, they, um, set 200,000 aside for their fund. And again, it's, it's been widespread from, from recreational businesses to bars and restaurants to salons. So we, we've covered a wide variety so far with the 14. Um, we'll see if we get six more applications. Uh, currently we've processed everything we've received up here. So I don't know if anybody has any questions or anything else.
Now, Matt, is that the, the, the program that they have to be outside the city limits of Dubuque?
Correct.
Yeah. I thought so. Okay.
Any other discussion or comments?
Well, I think the first thing Sarah would be, we'd have to approve the amendment, right?
Correct. Um, and I don't know if you already talked about this. The one thing I didn't have in the amendment is how big of a subcommittee essentially you would want for this temporary.
Well, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion. I would move that we have approved the amendment deleting, um, item F under eligibility and moving G up to F and that the committee would, shall consist of five members.
I would second that.
I have a motion to second to approve the amendment as presented with the amendment with the change of taking item F out of B under eligibility. And the committee shall consist of five members. My question is, is this including the article one that you, um, mentioned, is that, I mean, are we approving the whole amendment or just article one that you have? The whole amendment, is that correct?
All that's on the amendment sheet. Yes.
So is that saying we're approving this committee and approving this program? Sarah?
So the way this is written, it's, allows you to, um, provide the temporary funding into the future. So once the amendment is signed and passed, you still need to then essentially activate the article four, um, and then create your committee.
But all this amendment does is give us the opportunity to do that. It doesn't say we're going to, right?
Correct. It gives you the option, um, provides you with the ability to do so should you choose to.
Well, yeah.
That's how I understood it.
So we're not actually setting up the fund yet.
No. Okay. This gives us the opportunity to do so either now or in the future.
So we're including this amendment into the revolving loan fund.
Rules and regulations.
Rules and regulations.
Yes.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried. Now, are we still possibly taking action on implementing this program?
Well, I think we've discussed it several different times. I think there is a need for it. I think how it's distributed is the, the key word. And how we, how we determine and who we appoint to that committee. But, um, I, I guess my motion would be that we take $50,000 from the revolving loan fund to set up this fund and that, uh, application forms would be created and we would appoint, uh, the five members, one of whom would be from the existing revolving loan fund committee and proceed.
Okay, I would second that.
I have a motion to second to approve to take $50,000 from the revolving loan fund, uh, provide an application, set up a committee and proceed as the draft is presented.
And I, and I guess I would, as part of the discussion, I know this is not going to meet the need. And I know there will be some issues with selection of businesses or individuals or whoever receives the funding, but at least it's a start.
I guess I'd like to see how many applicants do come in.
Absolutely.
What the need is before we start distributing any money.
Well, they'll all come to us eventually.
Yeah. I'm just worried that, I mean, some people are on board with it now and there's other ones that haven't heard anything about this. And all of a sudden we start passing out checks and people hear about it, but somehow.
Well, I think somehow, somehow rather, I know that through ECIA, they have a contact list of all of the city clerks in Jackson County. We could certainly send letters to the city councils and to the ci- city clerks announcing that the fund has been established.
Yeah, that'd be good.
It'd be hopefully their responsibility to communicate with the businesses in their communities that there is a fund and let, I mean, send, uh, send applications with it if, if we so desire. Um, but yes, we have to get the word out. We have to make sure that businesses throughout the county are avail- are, are eligible and let them know about it. It's not, everybody reads the paper. Not everybody watches. I can't imagine them not watching the board of supervisors meeting, but, um, they don't. Right. So we have to be able to get the word out.
Any further discussion?
I, I might add, uh, I might add, Matt, how did you get the word out into you?
I know they did it through, uh, social media and newspaper and radio.
Thank you.
Dubuque Board, Roger, is so much more popular than we are. So, you know, everybody probably watches their, their meetings. They're much more colorful.
Yeah, they know the paper before you.
Yeah, they did. They, they made the paper almost every day.
Uh, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion that was presented, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Nay. Motion carried. All right. I would thank everyone who participated for that portion of it. Um, Lisa, I think we have time here before the close or before. Are you available, Lisa?
I am.
Okay.
I only had two things for the board this morning. I just need a motion to approve the minutes of the May 12th and the May 14th, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith and authorized publication in the official newspapers.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion to second to approve the minutes of the May 12th and the May 14th, 2020 board proceedings as written by Auditor Smith. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carried.
I also need a motion to approve a class C liquor license with outdoor service and Sunday sales to Bluff Lake and 9301 95th Avenue, Makoka, effective July 18th, 2020 to July 17th, 2021.
So moved. Second.
Motion to second to approve a class C liquor license, outdoor sales and service to Bluff Lake as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Nay. Motion carried.
And that's all that I have for the board today. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, Luann? So your first item is crossed off?
First item is crossed off, yes. All right. Calendar first. Um, there is a department head meeting that directly follows this meeting and Mike will be heading up. Um, at six o'clock tonight is a Jackson County Economic Alliance meeting via Zoom for Jack. And also at six o'clock is a conservation, we're meeting at the Prairie Creek Recreational Area. No?
Five thirty.
Five thirty.
And then we're meeting, we're going to look at the other buildings on the property. We'll do a little road trip or whatever, decide like the old barn and there's some other sheds that are.
Were you happy yourself?
No, this is at Prairie Creek. So the meeting will start at five thirty and we'll do a little tour of the park and then come back to the hall for the regular meeting, which is probably about six, six thirty.
Better take your boots or the Jeep, one of the two.
All right. Tomorrow, Wednesday, May 20th, at noon is the Iowa Workforce Office Hours conference call for Jack. It's usually been on Friday, but now it's, we could run Wednesday. And at four o'clock, starting at four o'clock tomorrow afternoon is ECIA Executive and Council Meeting and the ECDC meeting, and those are by Zoom. Or if you have to go up there, and she said there were documents for you, for Jack. On Thursday, May 21st, I have an addition at seven AM will be hometown pride meeting in Bellevue, probably by Zoom, but for Mike. And at nine AM, Mike has a housing trust fund meeting and I haven't heard yet. I assume that'll be a virtual meeting as well.
Normally it's, yes.
For Mike. At four PM that afternoon is the local emergency planning committee conference call for all of you. Friday, May 22nd at 10 AM is a meeting for the Eastern Iowa Mental Health and Disability Services Region. And it will include all the supervisors from the region and that will be via WebEx. Monday, May 25th, the courthouse will be, uh, closed and the offices will be closed as well, um, in observance of Memorial Day. And our next regular meeting will be on Tuesday, May 26th at nine AM.
He usually changed to the afternoon. Next time we didn't.
We did not. Changed it for Shelley and she didn't need to change, so we just left it. Um, next order of business is a appointment of the 2020 ATV committee. And it's the same as was on the committee last year. So I'm just looking for motion to prepoint all the members for another year.
Make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion to second to, oh, point the 2020 ATV committee as presented. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Nay. Motion carried.
I also put on here discussion, possible action on the these softball fields to have with this city of Makoka. I'm not sure that we're prepared at this point to take action. Um, as another, as you wanted to discuss.
Uh, I had a question in that Lisa about 50/50 responsibility of parking or something.
Coordinating of the.
Yeah.
Areas, yes.
I would think whoever uses them and doing that, that we're not using that, but that. I don't know, maybe, um.
There's something that we need to specify in the.
Yeah, specify. I think it's rope. There's some posts and ropes that kind of section out the parking lots. And it's a little bit different now too with the, um, RC part there.
Right.
And is that under the Makoka's lease or is that directly, are we going to take that section out of there? Or is that still overseen by Makoka?
That's what I think. There's still some questions that have to be answered before we can.
Is, is Sarah still on? No?
No, she's not.
Ask a little more information on it.
Yeah, I think we better table that. Does, do we need a motion for that?
Motion table?
Yeah.
I would second that we table it until we get further information from the city.
I have a motion to second to table the action on the south. I have a motion a second to table the action on the softball field lease with Macokona, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried.
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Any other boards or commission reports that anybody would like to share? I know Jackie been busy again, but maybe you don't have anything to report.
Well, we did have our early childhood Iowa meeting yesterday. We just basically reviewed the contracts and the, we're still, we're still not sure about the funding, they said it could be maybe a ten to fifteen percent decrease in funding for early childhood Iowa, so we kind of looked at the contracts and we basically decided that we would ask each of the contract holders to reduce their their budget request by fifteen percent. If the bun, funding comes in higher than we're possibly anticipating that the state told us. We can always amend their budgets and increase their funding, but rather than fund them totally without knowing what our funding is going to be. We didn't think was a good business decision. So we, we, that was one of the things that we discussed. We also had our mental health governing board meeting yesterday, we approved our plan that includes an increase, includes the youth. The Department of Human Services had a meeting, they didn't like the fact that we had not hired a youth coordinator, but in discussion with, there were a couple other regions that also had not hired anybody. And they had just, we just put in that Lori Elam would be holding that position at least for the beginning of the process. And one of the main objectors was a legislator, so they reminded the legislator that in the original mo, the original bill that was submitted included the funding with it. And that was removed from the bill when it was passed and so I guess she was a little embarrassed that she didn't remember that, I guess, and so they they did approve our plan with Lori's serving temporarily until they can either address the funding stream or make some other decisions. We also approved to the twenty eight agreement, which is part of the discussion for this Friday with all of the supervisors. That was I was, I was happy that it passed because there was, last week we had a lot of discussion. And I think all of the discussions from the five counties were incorporated into the final draft and it 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 passed, so that's good. We also had a request for some funding for Clinton County to meet some additional needs that they had and the shortfall that they had in their budget, that was approved. One of the big questions that all five counties have talked about is a lot of the counties, the tax dollars aren't coming in as, as normal, there's a lot of shortfalls that people have not paid their their property tax and so we're kind of looking at what we are going to have to do about the mental health revenue that's coming in from the five counties and make some adjustments possibly. And that'll probably be discussed on Friday as well. There's just a lot, a lot going on.
Far from over.
Yeah, so, but we'll see what happens. Last Friday at the the Iowa Works State Board meeting, they did approve our merger with Region sixteen. So nine and sixteen have have merged effective July first. We had a meeting also with the fiscal agent and we're in the process of trying to work out a contract with them. We met with Mayor and Mayor, who was the company that the State Department hired to come in and kind of work with the regional workforce development regions to make sure that they took the steps to be compliant with the law. And to help with this whole process of regionalizing and merging. And they met just with our two regions, nine and sixteen, and with the fiscal agent that we're planning to utilize. They're, they're like ECIA, but it's down in the south part of the state. We met the, the, we met their Kelly Dootmire and their fiscal agent down there. And what, what the purpose of the meeting was, was to discuss what all the training needed to be for the fiscal agent. And since we've had Eastern Iowa Community College has been our fiscal agent past and they they also receive funding, so they opted not to apply to be the fiscal agent. Um, so we're working on that, we have hired our staff and I guess things are are moving along really well, we will be, we're the first.
Well, that's what I was just about to say, I, from the emails I read that we're ahead of the ballgame compared to the rest of this.
We're the first region to have the new board appointed, first region to have staff, first region to have the fiscal agent. Not hired per se, but we're negotiating with the hiring and Linda Roush and Michelle McCarney said we're setting the standard for the state of Iowa. So things are, I mean, it's, it's, it's been a great cooperation of the eight county CEOs and we'll be ready by July first.
We appreciate your hard work there and dedication to that, that's, anytime you undertake again a combination of different agencies and people coming together, it just takes a lot of collaborating to that.
And a lot of paper.
Yeah, there's, thank God for, thank God for emails, the way it looks or you have a stack.
We, no, that was for mental health, we did get a email, was it yesterday that email coming in from the Davenport paper? That they want, they want copies of all of the emails that were sent between.
I seen that, that was Do-It, Do-It Observatory, I think.
Yeah, so and I said, Luann, I says, well, let's see what happens.
Yeah.
But it was, it was an interesting process and I think everything's going to be okay.
Appreciate that, got a couple minutes yet, otherwise we have a closed session scheduled. Any other reports on any old business or boards or commissions?
Conservation's been, I mean, they haven't been doing any classes, so they're getting a lot more work done out in the field.
I guess I have a question for you, are you no longer on the executive committee for the Macokona watershed?
Yeah, I'm still the chair.
Oh, because last night at our RCND, they gave a list of the new people that were on, so they added four new individuals.
Added four to that, yeah.
Okay, because she didn't talk about who was carryover.
Three of us that were.
Okay, because I, I, that bothered me when I, when I saw that and I was in a hurry to get to the the Together We Build meeting, so I didn't pursue it, I thought I'd talk to you today, so good.
Yeah, actually, they're doing their water sample.
May eighth, isn't it, or was it May?
No, it's this week.
She talked about that too.
It might be tomorrow.
I know it's this week.
Yeah.
And they, didn't they do someone the eighth too?
We did get that, I did get a conservation packet the other day, that was interesting again to see that, yeah, I'm glad we're getting.
Yeah, I am too, I got it.
They're kind of thinking about trees and print and stuff, then Kevin decided not to putting the trees up for sale this year.
I've seen that.
Just because market's not that good, but last year was, I mean, we're normally running about sixty thousand a year and last year was ninety some thousand, so the bids went up.
I see they're working on the Spruce Creek Campground to get that back ready. So, see how that works for everyone, hopefully to the positive.
Amen.
Appreciate that, we are at ten o'clock and we are scheduled for, on our agenda is a closed session with Jason Palmer, who is representing Jackson County and Deputy Steve Schrader in the pending lawsuit with the Edwards family to discuss pending litigation. We are to get Jason on the phone, is that correct? We don't?
I don't, was Lisa going to do, were you going to call them, Lisa?
No, go ahead and call him, Mike, because I will be coming over shortly to take the minutes of the closed session.
Okay, do, does someone have a number? I think Sarah would probably have that number, is that correct?
Yes.
Was she intend to join us or is she going to be on Zoom or she have to come for a closed session?
This is not a Zoom meeting, she would need to be present in the room.
If we're going to close session.
Correct, we're going to be pausing Zoom because this is a closed session.
So we need to make a motion to go in the closed session.
Not until Palmer gets done. We're still in open.
Correct.
Steve, Lisa went down to see if Sarah had the number, if she's joining us down here, if that's the case.
Okay, all right.
At this time, we'll just take a short recess. Do I gotta dial eight after I hit the speaker, Luann or not?
Say you'll eat first to get an outside line. And then one and then number.
Yep.
The meeting has been resumed, Mike.
Okay, we will reconvene at this time and we're going to call Attorney Jason Palmer at this time.
After we made the motion to go in closed session, please will all come down and we'll. We can't do that till we.
Hello? All I'm getting is a dial tone.
Did you do eight and then one?
I did.
And then did you put three one eight one in after you dialed their numbers?
No.
You have to do that to get the outside line.
All right, so I'm going to dial out.
Eight, one, and then the number.
Yep.
And then immediately do three one eight one.
Before, after the number?
After the number.
Three one eight one? Yes, this is the Jackson County Board of Supervisors and this is Mike Steinis, the chairman of the board. And we are calling to discuss a litigation issue with Mr. Jason Palmer.
You're calling to discuss the situation with him?
He was, we were to call him at ten o'clock, we're in a closed session and we were going to discuss litigation, going to closed session.
Hold on one moment, I had a hard time hearing you, hold on just a moment.
This is Jason.
Jason, hey, it's Mike Steinis with the Jackson County Board of Supervisors here in Macokona, Iowa regarding the litigation process here with the Edwards family.
Yes, good morning, how are you?
How are you? Good, we're good, we're good. Um, I guess at this time, we want to discuss this, is it your request that we go into closed session?
Yes.
Okay.
I would move going to closed session, second.
I have a motion and a second to go into closed session at this time, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried. Did it get back on? You're muted, Lisa.
I have resumed the meeting.
Okay, we are back in open session for the twenty twenty, or May nineteenth, twenty twenty board meeting. And I believe we discussed everything that was on our agenda. We, we have a board department head meeting here yet, but any other business before the board this morning?
I'd move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, nay, motion carried, meeting adjourned, thank you all.